Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the North Kent Cape Fear Community College for Education Town Hall meeting with the Governor of North Carolina. We're delighted to welcome several special guests to Cape Fear Community College today, and there's so many of you I'm afraid that I guess a lot of you coming in the door. So I just want to recognize the people who've participated along with the Governor. Let me introduce to you our facilitator, who is still here, Dr. Al Lurge, who is Superintendent of New Hampshire County Schools. Dr. Bill Harrison, who is Chief Executive Officer and the Chairman of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and State Board of Education. And first, a very dear to the community college system, our friend, Dr. Scott Rawls, who is President of the North Carolina Community College System. Most especially, we are honored to welcome back a good friend of Cape Fear Community College who now bears the title of Governor of the state of North Carolina. In her former capacities, Beverly Purdue helped this institution obtain equipment appropriations, the increased vocational training opportunities for dual- and double-high school students, helped to recruit and abuse expanding industries in southeastern North Carolina, and helped in this very room to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for scholarships for needing CSAC students. Our governor grew up in the coal mining mountains of southwest Virginia before leaving most of her adult life in North Carolina. Neither of her parents graduated from high school. Nevertheless, they instilled in her the fundamental values that included education and hard work as the path to success. She's been a public school teacher, she served as director of geriatric services at a community hospital in her hometown of New Virginia, and she earned a PhD in educational administration. Prior to being elected to two consecutive terms as North Carolina Lieutenant Governor, she served two terms in North Carolina House of Representatives and five terms in the North Carolina Senate, where she became the first woman in the entire history of the North Carolina General Assembly to also serve as the Chair of the powerful Senate Appropriations Committee. The governor established herself at the General Assembly in several landmark initiatives, including raising teacher salaries from 43rd generation to 21st, starting the Tourist Health Insurance Program, and creating the Green Water Management Trust Fund. As Chair of the Health and Wellness Trust Fund Initiative, Beverly Purdue helped create Center Care, a prescription drug program for a low income senior called the best in the nation by the North Carolina chapter of the American Association of Retired Persons. And under her leadership, the state targeted tobacco use for the first time, an effort that has now resulted in all 115 public school systems in North Carolina becoming 100% tobacco-free. The record shows that our governor was one of those active lieutenant governors in all of North Carolina's history. She led North Carolina's efforts during the Brack process that defense departments based realignment and closure procedure. And that process that she fled resulted in the protection of North Carolina's military bases worth $18 billion and 350,000 jobs to the state in time. Through the success, she launched the North Carolina Military Foundation to attract 21st-century jobs through defense, aerospace, and homeland security to North Carolina. Already, the state's military economic impact has grown to more than $23 billion since that Brack process began. She also created the green business fund to make investments in environmental innovations, such as alternative fuels, rain construction, and other clean energy technologies, all while positioning North Carolina to become a national leader in environmental technology and highly bring collar jobs. The inauguration of Beverly Purdue as North Carolina's 73rd Governor and our first woman Governor came us no surprise to those who have followed her distinguished public service career. We've seen her champion initiatives focused on creating 21st-century jobs, establishing world-class public schools, and improving the health of our people. We've seen her tirelessly travel the state to meet the people of North Carolina, to listen to their hopes and dreams, to develop programs to help them. Drawing on her experiences as teachers and the values she places in education, our governor is working to transform North Carolina into classrooms into 21st-century learning centers through increased technology and a state-wide online school initiative, essential measures that are needed to prepare students in the global workforce. She is committed to attracting and retaining the best teachers in the nation, as she understands the success of our education system will define the economic future of this state. Ladies and gentlemen, please join the welcoming entirely campus and forward public service of the people of North Carolina, the governor of North Carolina, the honorably Beverly Purdue.
Sorry, now that they've redone their audio kind of setup, I'm Beverly Purdue, and I'm the Governor of North Carolina, and I'm privileged to be here with you this afternoon. I thought there might be 20 or 30 teachers and students here, so I have to tell you, you've taken my breath away to see this kind of crowd. And I want you to give me kind of a cakewalk for my first town hall meeting. Now, I'm here to talk about education, and if you're here to complain about something else, you can do that, but if I don't know all the answers, you can't take up the student and the teacher's time, okay? I'm honored to be on this wonderful campus. Where did Eric keep you go? He is a fabulous community college president, he's a good friend of southeastern North Carolina and North Carolina. Y'all should give him a round of applause. And Al, thank you for all you do for the public schools here. Your leadership is incredible, so we have a who's who, a new handover of educational system here. There's school boards and school board members and teachers and principals, but the most important people are the students and the parents. And I say to you, welcome and thank you for all you do. And now that I'm a grandmama, I say the grandparents are mighty important too. I want you to have a ring your grandma on a work day or something. And these two fellows over here, this is Bill Harrison, you'll get to know him, he is serving as the Chair and the CEO of North Carolina's public school system. He's a former superintendent, he's a well-educated man, but more importantly, the reason I'm looking forward to working with him on public schools and on the future of North Carolina's workforce is because he kind of gets it at the grassroots level. He was invaluable working with all of the different diverse communities. He was named as one of the best superintendents in this state, and as I checked around the country to find the person that he helped me do the job he elected me to do, the one name that kept coming up from Florida to California was Bill Harrison. So I convinced him to leave his great job and come to work in a very controversial job, and I'm honored that you're here. I expected you to expect great things from him. And this is Scott Rawls. If you don't know Scott, you need to get to know him. He's Dr. Rawls, Dr. Harrison, and Dr. Al, are you a doctor too? I mean, I'm the uneducated one in the group, I guess, but I have a PhD, they don't call me doctor. My daddy always thought I was a medical doctor, didn't always worry about I didn't make more money. Scott is the President, Dr. Rawls is the President of North Carolina's Community College System. I have watched his work and his leadership for many years. He was actually the President of Craven Community College long before he was as famous as he is today. Even back then, there were folks who thought he was too young and not bold or able enough to leave the campus of the college where I call home. And he was there only about six months, and people who'd been there for years and were the Dowling Thomas's were just blown away by the dynamic leader that he is. We were blessed that he would come to the state system and leave the colleges across North Carolina. I think the partnership, for those of you who don't know why I really asked both of them to come today, the partnership that we have between the public schools and the community colleges is all about the future. North Carolina is at a precarious time, this is America and the world, we all know that. When I ran for office, the unemployment rate was about 7.5% at its highest. Sometimes it was 6, sometimes it was 5 in the past four years. By the time I took office, it had begun to bump up, and earlier this week, we had to acknowledge that it was 10 and 3/4%. And a lot of us are not sure because of the global economy and the belt now across the country and the world that we've seen the bottom yet for North Carolina. And so in 30 days, I may be announced that it's 11% or higher. And so I want you to understand why today is so important. Every single decision that we make now in these tough times will define what our state looks like in the next 20, 30, and 40 years, because the young people during our educational system, as well as the folks who've lost their jobs and are back on our campuses here and across the state getting retraining, will define how North Carolina can compete in a global economy. When I had the opportunity to write the first budget, it was hard, and I know there are some of you who are very unhappy with the decisions I made, and I respect that, but the Constitution requires that I balance the budget. And I went into that process with two pillars of commitment in my own heart. Number one, to protect jobs and to grow jobs. Everything that I do, every day, every decision, every ounce of my energy is wrapped around jobs and education and healthcare. I can promise you that. I will work day and night for us to grow the existing jobs and to create new jobs, but you can't get any company to come here, you can't do any innovation or any future technology and science unless the work that these two guys, and Eric and Al do, and you do, succeeds, unless we have a really educated, competitive, innovative, adaptable workforce. And it all starts in public schools, so that was my second pillar. Once we can get it to kindergarten from Smart Start and More4, then we have a real shot at changing what North Carolina looks like in the next 20, 30 years. And the investments we make are so important. What do we have to do? We have to make sure we got great teachers and great principals. You know what, we have to also make sure, we've got to make sure we have right parents and great families, because the school system can't do alone. We all need to step up. The business community needs to step up. Do you know that in this state, you can find 60% of the people in prison, in our prison, whose mom or dad or grandmom or granddaddy were in prison before them? That's our data. If you're a third grader and you've got a family member in the penal system of North Carolina, the chances are about 6 out of 10 that you're going to end up there yourselves. So why are we not doing a better job in North Carolina? Of wrapping our arms around those children and helping them succeed in school? And no one that's young cares about them. And that's what groups like this are all about. So I'm here today to listen to you. I don't have a silver bullet. I don't have a promise that everything's going to be hunky-dory by the end of the year, but I do promise you that this is North Carolina, and that we're going to be fine at the end of the day if we do the hard work now and never turn our backs on our seed corn. And the seed corn to many are the people who are sitting in the schools, obviously, now, be they 75, or 17, or 7. Those minds that we're training will define our state as they have defined our state for the last 200 years. I'm a teacher, I'm a leader, I'm a learner. I have changed careers eight times during my work history, but four with the possibility of education, I wouldn't be here today. I believe this stuff. You heard Eric. My parents didn't have a high school diploma, but yet they told me that in the 60s and the 70s, that if I worked hard and got an education and went to church every time of the year, that I could be anything I wanted to be. And here I am, as the Governor of the greatest state in America. It shows, education pays off. So now let's hear from the kids. Eric, are we going to share this mic? Al, are we going to share this mic? Al is going to act as the moderator first. I'm going to call on Julian Thompson, and then we're going to change the rules a little bit. Al is going to moderate and pick on somebody, somebody who has gone on the web and volunteered to talk, but he's also going to pick somebody at random. This is a town hall, and I don't want it to be so controlled that folks who walked in don't have a chance to say something. It's only the last now. Bill and Scott are going to have an opportunity before Julian comes and talks to see if they have something to say. I apologize that you rewarded Eric's very kind, long introduction to me. We'll do better. We will make it faster and to the point. So first of all, let's see if Scott Rawls, the President of the Community College, has a word or two to say. I told you, did you, Scott?
I already nominated Bill here first, but thank you, and thank you for your leadership. One thing I would like to say is that there is something very unique about education in North Carolina, and being a North Carolinian, I've learned this more and now when I travel outside, and that is how remarkable the cooperation that exists among our institutions, public schools, universities. We work together all the time, and that happens together locally, and it also happens at the state level, and that's not always the way it is every other place. And that is so important, but I think the biggest issues we deal with now in education are not the purview of the community college system or public schools or universities. They cross those borders, and the only way we can deal with those issues is how we work among institutions. That's why I appreciate your leadership with the Education Cabinet. I think that's going to be very meaningful as we move forward. The Education Cabinet is a, it consists of Bill, myself, Ursula Bowles, Hope Williams with Private Colleges, with your counselor, the counselor of the Health and Human Services, and Governor as the leader, and we will be meeting on a regular basis now to tackle these big challenges of education. And I think that's really going to move us forward. That's been happening here formerly. We do that with the universities and with community colleges. Bill and I get together, we had the ham and eggs last week, but I think the groups getting together in this regard is really going to be meaningful, and we appreciate the leadership you're providing in moving that forward.
I think the future is as bright as it can be in North Carolina with all the challenges that we face. We have a governor who's going to lead us through those challenges, and she sees in those challenges opportunities, because it's going to be an opportunity that causes us to reexamine how we'll do the things that we do. And from that, when we get through this economic crisis, we're going to be much stronger forward. And I think a great example of what Scott was speaking, of which Scott was speaking, is here at this community college. We have the Wilmington Early College with students on campus here at, New Hampshire County students on campus here at this community college, this great facility, earning college credit, and these youngsters are going to get off to such a great start. And we have examples of that all across the state of North Carolina. I was very happy as a local superintendent doing the work that a local superintendent does on a day-to-day basis. I still too see myself as a teacher and never dreamed that I would be sitting where I'm sitting today, but the opportunity to work with this leader in this capacity was something that I absolutely could not turn down, because what she talks about and what she believes in with regards to education is exactly what I believe, and it starts at the classroom level with the teacher. And all of us, from the governor through the CEO, through the local superintendent, through local boards of education, through school principals, are here to support the teachers who do the real work with the children each and every day in the classroom. She has shown her commitment to teachers with her budget, and she's also committed to making sure that not one child drops out of school. I like the way she says that not one child should have permission to leave our schools, and I've been given the charge, and we're going to make that happen, Governor, and we look forward to working with my colleagues across the state as we give each and every child the type of education we will all have for our own children. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you both for being here. You can ask them questions, please. Now, let me tell you about Julian Thompson. She's come on, you're going to stay down there. Julian, come over in the lobby. And for any of y'all who can see my lip, this happened, I bit myself during the night, and I didn't even feel it, so maybe a monster came in. Let me tell you about Julian. She's a senior at Laney High, Mr. Superintendent. Now, Laney High beat Nibber High in soccer when I was a mama, so I already have a strike against Laney, but I'm anxious to hear about their virtual school. She's going to talk to us very briefly or maybe ask a question about something new that we have going on at the school called virtual. And why don't you tell us about it, Julian?
Absolutely. Dr. Lurge, Dr. Harrison, all right, and Dr. Rawls, you've been there for a day. Thank you very much for calling me to be here today. I'm currently enrolled as a student in North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, also known as NCPTS. I think it's a great opportunity for students to step outside the classroom. It's a really good break from a four-walled institution, but it gives you the opportunity to be an independent learner. It definitely helps you focus on your self-discipline. I was in school during my middle school years, so I definitely had to learn a lot about self-discipline and getting myself motivated. I don't really have anything much else to say. Is anybody having questions about the virtual public school?
Or not, Julian? Thank you. Thank you.
Actually, before we move over to the floor, I do want to say that on behalf of the public schools in southeastern North Carolina, we appreciate you having this town hall meeting. And I would like to also acknowledge that in this tight budget time, that you have managed to put into your budget the pay increase for teachers and our principals, who are the core essentials if we are going to achieve our goals of high student achievement in North Carolina. And we applaud you for that. Now, the floor will be open to your questions from students, educators, concerns to citizens. Now, these questions, I understand, can be directed to Governor Purdue, Dr. Harrison, and Dr. Rawls. So I would like to begin to give our students a chance first. If we have anyone here that would like to ask the Governor a question, please come forward. And I think you have a mic here for, thank you.
Oh, this is the Governor.
Who are you?
Okay. Here, me. With the growing budget issues, North Carolina forces the counties and towns to make structural cuts, spending, what structural cuts is spending is your office and staff personnel.
That's a good question. My office has taken a 7% reduction and will continue to take those reductions. We've lost two other people on the staff level. My personal commitment is to do as little as I can do. I'm driving, not flying. I'm doing a lot of my own stuff, just the way state employees are doing. I've asked state employees not to do anything that they can avoid doing, not to do anything that they can avoid doing, and I'm doing the very same thing, and we'll do more. We are all in this together, all of us. Nobody's better than all of us.
Thank you.
That was a great question.
It was a great question.
That was kind of in your face, I liked that.
I saw another Cape Fear student, please come forward.
My name is Jessie Montgomery, and I am a junior at the University of North Carolina at Wilmington, which is one of 10 schools that participate in the North Carolina Child Welfare Collaborative, and I am a collaborative scholar. It was on your budget for the program to be completely eliminated, and I just wanted to know how do you feel that will affect the community as far as training social workers in child protective services, being of assistance readily available outside of school as soon as we graduate versus someone having to be trained into the program? And what do you plan on doing for students currently in the program if it is eliminated?
It's a really good question, and the decisions that I made were hard decisions. There were no easy decisions. For those of you who don't know, and you may or may not know, the day I took office, there was a $3.4 billion deficit, and I had to find that money for the next year. And the law, the Constitution requires that I balance the budget. And I went through and made cuts that were not easy cuts for me. I looked at that program. I'm the former Chair of Craven County Social Services Board, so I understand how important you are. I will work with you in CWA and the universities across this state to restore any kind of programs I can. We'll work with you on alternative certifications. We'll work with you on completing your degree through virtual, which they tell me is possible. And so if you'll look at some other alternatives, the answer to completing your education and to keeping that going may not be the availability of five-days-a-week classes on UNCW's campus, but our students in the 21st century can take any course around the world over the internet, and I would encourage you to try to figure out how to do that. But thank you for what you're going to do. You're choosing a job for your career that's not high-paid, it's not high-stairs, but boy, it's high-stairs. You make a real difference, thank you.
Can we hear from one more student here over here?
There are flowers in the pot.
Hey, I'm Mariah Eric from the Penn Early College. I was just wondering, what do you think about the Penn Early College, too?
What do I think about early college programs? Early college, for those of you who haven't heard about it, is one of the best new innovative things going on in North Carolina. How, what grade are you in?
I'm a freshman.
And how long will it take you to finish both your high school diploma and your two years of community college?
It could take 45 years.
Four or five years. So when she gets her diploma from high school, this young woman will also have two years of community college education under her belt. It's really important. It allows students like you to make really tough choices now. What it means for her is that she probably will never be able to do much extracurricular because the hours are different and the challenges are different because she's actually, are they on a college campus, are you here?
Yeah, we're at the Burdock campus, the Cape Fear Community College.
So she's on a college campus, not in a traditional classroom. And in a traditional school, it's been a real thing for both the public schools and the community college presidents to agree to allow this to happen, because it presents a whole set of new challenges for the president of Cape Fear and colleges across the state. Because you've got, how old are you, if you mind if I ask?
I'm 14.
If you asked me, I would tell you it was none of your business, but I can ask you. At 14, she's on a college campus with people who could be my age, you know, because there are a lot of folks who are older on the community college campuses. So the whole thing presents a real set of challenges, but it's exciting and innovative. Do you love going to school?
Yeah, actually, it's kind of interesting, and I learn a lot.
She's the poster child of why it works, especially if you've got really bright kids or kids who just find it boring to be in the traditional classroom. And didn't you find it boring?
Well, sometimes it's kind of too easy, you know, and coming here, I can learn stuff faster, get ahead, and kind of figure out what I like.
Is that not what school's about, the 21st century? It's pretty cool. I like your program, thank you very much.
It's worth my children. If we had a question, is there any, we haven't heard from any of our educators. Is there any teacher or educator that has a question at this point?
No, they're the quietest group I've ever seen.
Please come forward.
And you know that Dr. Harrison and Dr. Rawls will take questions, too. I told them they felt like cotted plants, so.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Anderson from New Hampshire County Schools. Please put on the seat.
What grade?
Free pay, I'm a 4.
Good for you.
I'm a 4. John Redd from Office of School Readiness identified in the latest report a solid group that More4 is a critical part of the Department of Public Construction's effort to prepare every student for school success. While we recognize the financial need for the House Bill 539 to merge Smart Start with More4, how will you ensure the integrity of the More4 program and its services to at this children and families?
For those of you who don't know, I'm old enough to be called the mother of Smart Start. I helped do it back in the 90s and believed tremendously in Smart Start and More4. And I'll just be real honest with you, at this point in time, I don't know if the merger's the right thing to do or not. I don't know enough about it. And you know what, it would have made a hell of a difference if I'd have, if I'd have, I'd just tell the truth. I don't know what the good would come of it. It looks like there might be some administrative efficiencies for a little bit of the money, but my core reason for believing in it is because it provides, More4 provides academic capacity to kids. And the way I see Smart Start, it's a plethora of different services that you can get that aren't necessarily academic, and so they go together, but they're not the same. And I wonder, I wonder sometimes if it's easy just to say something and perhaps harder to dig deep and figure it out. So let's just see what happens, but I wouldn't spend a lot of sleepless nights worrying about a merger at this point in time. spend a lot of sleepless nights worrying about a merger at this point in time.
Other questions? Please.
Could you ask them a question? Come on, be nice.
Okay, I'll direct this to Dr. Harrison.
Yes.
My name is Doug Shaw, and my son William is honored to be attending NC State University on a teaching fellowship. It used to be a pretty good thing, but in the fifteen years it's been in existence, there's not been one increase in the amount of the stipend for the fellowship. There's also been fifteen tuition increases, book increases, fee increases, cost of living increases. So, I wonder what you could do about it. Now, a few years ago, the legislature awarded more money for the teaching fellowship program, but Dean Gag, instead of increasing the amount of money, increased the number of fellowships and then hired lots more people to administer. Right now, the teaching fellowship is not worth quite a piece of it.
You don't have to do this anymore.
So, when you have been in office long enough, you live in this.
She's bailing me out already. That's why I love her. First of all, the teaching fellowship is administered by the public school forum, and, and we're great supporters and proponents of the teaching fellowship. But we think it's, it's crucial that we grow our own. We, we need teachers in this state. We need to identify and encourage the best and the brightest to go into teaching. And the teaching fellowship is, is one of the ways to do, one of the ways to do that. I, I will let the governor deal with the fiscal part of that.
You know, again, I was there when the teaching fellows were created, a role to live in the cloth and, and the capacity that, in fact, I was somewhere today where I was with somebody who was a teaching, a senior in high school. He's the governor's page. And they came in, and he was there taking pictures. And he was saying he was gonna be a teacher, I think a history teacher, civics teacher in high school. And I said, are you a teaching fellow? He was excited to death because he had just been accepted. It's a very, very competitive process, as you know from your son. I have to tell you that I'm always eager to put more money into any kind of scholarship for teachers or nurses because I think they are the core things that we need to grow, both for our education and as people may age, we need to age out because we need a lot more folks in the healthcare arena. But I'll have to be honest, too, I think that there are so many other peripheral benefits from selection as a teaching fellow, the trips they take, the special one-on-one educational opportunities they have, the camaraderie that develops from a class of teaching fellows. And I surely respect the fact that you and thousands of parents across the state are really troubled with tuition and books and fees. I was a single mom, and I was troubled as I educated my two kids. But I often wish that my sons had had the opportunity to be a Morehead Scholar, or a teaching fellow, or another kind of fellow, simply because of the different quality of education. So, I hope that you and your son measure the experiences that he is receiving with this special, special opportunity that was a gift to him from the people of North Carolina, as well as worrying about the financial problems.
Thank you. In the back here, yes.
And telling me wanting to be a teacher. We really want him to be a teacher.
Hi, my name is Richard Gore. I'm a freshman from Longus County. And the question I have for you, Governor, is longevity. What's your thinking behind cutting longevity? We're talking about the teachers and administrators that's putting these ten year, earlier, and, and we seem like we just got taken bonus money from us last year, and we feel like getting taken, this money taken from us. I just feel like it's, it's kind of took. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my teachers.
It is tough, and I respect for you. And I knew, I bet myself, well, I'm not gonna tell you, I bet myself a bad if they play. So, I tend to even, huh, I'm the new one. But I get asked a longevity question. For those of you in the audience who don't know, longevity is a bonus that state employees and teachers, and I think retirees get it too, I'm not sure, get for actually, no, I don't think retirees get it, actually work in a year. It is not tied to any kind of outcomes or derivatives. It's actually almost a bonus for tenure, which is, is understandable because we don't pay people enough. But I'll tell you where I found myself, and where I hope the educators in this state can understand. I had to fund $3.6 billion. And I made a pretty direct choice. I looked at longevity, the cost to the state of North Carolina on longevity was $170 million. Now, I could have raised all your taxes to do that, or I could have laid off about, I think it's more than a thousand teachers. I forgot how many teachers I would have had to go out and fire, maybe 2,000. I could have fired 2,000 state employees. I could have furloughed everybody in the state for two days a month. I could have done all those things. And I looked at the educators. I talked to the Education Association and at the State Employees Association. And I said, you had a pick between the step to keep you on track so that teachers could earn more on their step salaries, or longevity, what would you choose? And everybody I talked to said, those are bad decisions. We don't choose anything. And I said, well, let me tell you, I don't have that luxury. And so, I chose what I thought would do the least harm to you. Because at the end of the day, unless you're a 25-year employee, and we've got some of those who are making $100,000 a year, and you get 20% of that, some people are making $25,000 longevity bonuses. But rank-and-file people are getting $1,000, $1,500. And that money is much less than what it would cost you if I took 12 or 24 days away from your salary at the end of the month. So, it's an accounting decision. It was a decision I thought that would keep state government moving forward. It's a decision that I don't know that the Journal Assembly is gonna accept. The conversation I hear coming from the Journal Assembly now is that they are gonna do furloughs, which means that either way, you're gonna lose money out of your check. And I worry about how you do that. If you're willing to give up your Christmas vacation, which is what I'm hearing you're gonna do, to pay for your furlough day. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a nightmare none of us want. And I'm sorry that folks are either for it or against it. But if you look at the choices, you would have been mad at me one way or the other. So, I took the way I thought would do the best for kids.
Thank you. Jonathan Lee?
You know, the Journal Assembly staff, someone will get $30,000.
I have a question, a question.
Um, I don't really have a question for you. I understood that...
I'm tired. That's a good thing.
Should we share an experience?
It's, uh, share an experience. So, yeah, everybody on stage just to take a break. My name is Jonathan Lee. My wife and I, well, it's a big crowd. My classes are usually smaller than this. My wife and I moved to Wilmington in 2001. My oldest daughter being paraplegic, we needed a school that was ADA, American with Disabilities Act compliant, somewhere with ramps and elevators. So, we came to Wilmington so that Danielle could go to the Ashley High School. Well, it wasn't very long after we relocated that 9/11 happened, and the telecom industry basically went away. I was a network engineer at the time. Well, turned out there weren't too many network engineering jobs in New Hanover County at that time. So, we were kind of left in a quandary. I was fortunate enough to be accepted to Cape Fear Community College and went through the radiography program. It's a competitive program to get into, so I was very fortunate to be accepted right off the bat. But after going through the program at Cape Fear Community College, it was a 22 months of pretty hard work. Came out with that and was eligible to be hired at the hospitals here locally. So, I worked at three, four different hospitals. And while I was doing that, I was also teaching part-time. And I guess I slowly spent more and more time at the community college and less and less time at the hospitals. And now, I work full-time for Cape Fear Community College, training other people to do what I do. So, I guess I'm considered a success story as far as workforce retraining. And my boss, Regina McBear, had asked me to come and relate the story to everyone. And hopefully, it gives people an idea of what they can do. If your career goes away, you can always start, it's never too late to start over. Or even 15 years in, you can drop what you're doing and do something else.
We have time for one more question here, I think, right over here on the side.
Thank you. First, thank you. I feel very good to take that first question. My students were asked to take questions from their teachers. I have one of my social studies teachers asked the students to ask that. I would like to hand you a packet of letters from our sixth grade students who are in science. They wrote some papers about energy, an alternative energy sources from their smart class. But I have a question. On behalf of some of my Hispanic students, my name is Brian Jones, I'm a school social director at Redmond School, here in Grand County. Some of our Hispanic students, we were told to give them some information. Many of them have been working extremely hard to make sure they don't have education throughout high school, but we were informed. And the information was a little bit sketchy. But for many of them who may not have the opportunity to go to a four-year school, who wanted to go to, to the school that's at Cape Fear Community College, and many of them were told that they did not have official standards here in the United States, that they would have the option. Can you speak to that?
You're probably referring to the issue with undocumented immigrants. And it is a big issue right now. It's a certain economy in North Carolina, but across the United States. It's an issue that is difficult to resolve here. It's an issue that nationally is a significant issue. Each year, at this point in time, our community system is not admitting undocumented immigrants. There's a study that's being conducted at this point in time. It is an issue before our state board, just as an issue all across the nation. It's a very challenging issue in that regard. Before last year, we had approximately 175 undocumented immigrants per year, about 34 of those were public school graduates or public school students. So, it's a small number, primarily because those students do pay out state tuition when they were admitted. So, it is a, it is a, in that regard, the issue is a small number of students, but every student is important. It's an important challenge that still awaits us here within the community system. It's an important national issue as well.
One more?
One more?
Thank you. My name is Carl Berg, ready to give relations in Grand County. But more to the point, I want to speak wearing a hat of the immediate past president of the Northern Carolina Association Community College Trustees, which we had a pleasure, Governor, to work together three years to a three-year-old state president. I am excited to see the cooperation that's taking place, God, between yourself, the community college piece, as well as the DPI piece. I feel as an advocate for the community colleges of the state, that it's gonna be the community colleges, Governor, that's gonna move us forward from where we are now, as far as training, retraining, and attracting industry to the state. And in my mind, having worked as an industrial developer for the state, that's what's gonna send the positive messages to those companies that are looking to locate and relocate, but more importantly, those companies that we retain here in this state, that's gonna grow and provide the opportunities for our children that's coming through the P through 12 programs and more importantly, be trained at our community college. Now, I would say to you, continue pushing these through, gentlemen, to bring those pieces together and to make it seamless. Thank you.
Okay, it is, that was our last question. And I think we need to thank Governor Perdue for being present. Well, this is your turn.
But, please, yes. And then, Christy, was that, when y'all bring up the website, and I don't know, because I don't read email right now. It's all public records, and I love public records, but no, thank you. Thank you, Governor Perdue. My name is Dr. Crystal Swenson-Gritten. I am a former lady high school graduate and a North Carolina teaching fellow. But I'm here to speak to you on behalf of the public school pre-K system. I have two children who can come through the program, and I'm supposed to relate to you the benefits of the program as we've experienced. The early intervention that one of my sons received was able to detect cataracts in both eyes, which enabled us to immediately get an IEP developed, were able to have accommodations for textbooks, and tank to do testing. That child was gone on being a middle school student who was doing well, learned how to read music and play the oboe, and is self-confident enough to play soccer and lacrosse and football, even though we had to try to tuck him out of the football aspect because he's got lens and transplant and his arms. I have another son who is, has manual dexterity and trained professionals, and his teachers noticed that for us. I'm just a parent, even though I had a terminal degree. I wasn't able to see that in my own children. My second son has gone on to work with phonics and letter recognition. And because we were within the public school system, the same assessment tools are being used, and we had a seamless transition into kindergarten. And I would ask, or would like to promote the concept that all four-year-olds be able to glean the benefits from a public school pre-K kindergarten education. The teachers are the most important factor in public pre-K education. We send them there as loving creatures, and we've devoted them for four years, and how pre-K turned them into students, taught them how to ride the bus, taught them how to get along well with others, taught them the importance of punctuality and all of those nitty-gritty things that you don't often find in other child here situations. And because children at this age are very impressionable and so have the worst of our habits, I would encourage you to find the most highly qualified teachers from which they can learn, specifically with professionalism that our educators bring in terms of how they dress, how they interact with other people, and, and respect they show colleagues. I'm sorry, these were abbreviated remarks. I know that you were impressed with that, but thank you for my review, Steve.
This is a reminder, the governor could not hear your question. At the bottom of your program is the email address to send your question in.
Would you please do that? I read the questions. I'm on the road a whole lot. And I actually, and the stories, the stories I got from the sixth graders, nothing makes me realize how important all the work we all do together is, and to get the stories from you. Every day, I read 10 or 12 stories that I pull from the letters we get in the office and the emails that we get. Makes a real difference. I apologize that there are so many of you who couldn't ask your question. Let me just sum up by saying, I'm a kindergarten teacher. That's how I started. So, I understand how I, I taught three different levels, kindergarten, ninth, and 12, because I could never keep a job, I guess. But, pre-K and the, the whole concept, the four-year-old public school is one that I haven't embraced. Right now, we have to continue to allow people with small children to make the choices they want for their childhood. But for children who would like to be in that public pre-King, I think it's a really important piece of the educational system that North Carolina, when times are better, needs to figure out how to embrace it may happen. I want to thank all of you here, the students who spoke from their hearts, the sixth graders who wrote the letters, the parents have a wonderful teacher to be. And I hope that somehow we can keep raising the salary and making the classroom work so that he will feel like it's the most important career in the world, because it is. And I've learned at my age that the most important things you do with your life aren't defined by money. So, you tell him that. And his friends are making $100,000, and he's making $30,000. It's real tough choices that we make. For the principals and the teachers, what you do in the classroom defines what our workforce will look like in the next generation. You do actually literally hold a heartbeat of North Carolina in your hands. And so, I thank you on behalf of the nine and a half other people who call this state home. For the others of you who simply came to see what I look like. I'm sorry. It's the end of the day. And I'm worried out. If you might be back some other time, I'll dress better and look nicer. But I want to thank you. I want to thank Dr. I want to thank Dr. Rawls and Dr. Harrison. I want to thank you for your help moderating this panel. Eric, for your hospitality and opening the facility up. I can't tell you how much this evening means to me. My first, and there were people here, I still worry about people shoving on. And at the end of the day, I want you to know that every night when I go there and say my prayers, I thank God for the opportunity to be the governor of the greatest state in America. It's a privilege I take very seriously and I will do my best. So at the times I make decisions you don't agree with me, feel very comfortable emailing or calling and telling me what you would rather I had done. But if I've made a decision and you can understand the tough choices that I'm required to make, once in a while, you can just watch my back. I'd be really grateful. Thank you very much.